I'm going to call the February meeting of the Post Falls Planning and Zoning Commission to order. If you'll rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kelly, can we have a roll call, please?
Kimball?
Present.
Carey?
Present.
Ostemeyer?
Present.
Davis?
Present.
Horders?
Here.
Latham?
Here.
Let the record show that all commissioners are present.
John, any amendments to the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay. We'll move on. Presentations, why don't you introduce Russ?
Thank you. John Manley, Associate Planner at City Post Falls, and then we're all with the community development. Our privilege to have Russ Cannoli as the new Public Services Director, and it's been a great addition, and we've already seen some improvements in all aspects, so it's been great.
Okay. Thank you very much. Welcome, Russ.
Welcome.
Okay, we're going to have a public hearing this evening. If you wish to speak during that testament, or during the hearing, you need to sign up to speak with Kelly over here. I'm sure, Jackson, you guys have already done that, so we'll move on. Any declaration of conflict?
I'd like to declare a conflict on the public hearing for tonight, Jaclyn West Annexation. I currently do work with Jaclyn and the Riverbend Property Owners Association, so I'll not be voting or a part of that.
Okay. Any other? Good to go, then. All right, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Can we have a roll call, Kelly?
Kimball?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Hampy?
Yes.
Ostemeyer?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Yes.
Latham?
I'll abstain.
Do we have any citizens who wish to speak on anything that's not on the agenda this evening? I don't think we do. All right, any unfinished or old business? Wow, we're zipping right through, all right. That brings us to the public hearing. I guess we'll just open the public hearing for the Jaclyn West Annexation A-1406. John, if you'll present.
Yes, the Jaclyn West Annexation, case file A-14-06, applicant being the Jaclyn Land Company, LLLP. They are here tonight, and they're representatives, to speak on their behalf. The requested action is to annex approximately 14 acres of real property into the city of Post Falls with the intent to utilize pre-existing buildings for industrial purposes. Within SMARTCODE, title 18A-04.020, SMARTCODE mandates all annexations greater than 10 acres to be annexed into the city. There is the option, if it was less than 10 acres, for city council to determine whether Title 18 or SMARTCODE would be applicable, but in this case, it would be mandatory. In that light, staff reviewed the request and took into consideration of it being SMARTCODE, and found that a lot of industrial uses in a mixed-use, walkable-type code-based, form-based code, they don't go hand-in-hand very well. SMARTCODE does allow, though, for these type of circumstances to establish a special district, and special districts are for those areas that don't necessarily meet the true intent of SMARTCODE. But in this light, we also have Title 18 that's also, has industrial districts defined, and we've developed many industrial sites with that code. And so with this application, the intent is to define Special District 1 as no different than, as industrial as defined within Title 18. So that way, for implementing it, we would utilize more or less Title 18 for its permissible rights for that Special District 1. It was a way to utilize SMARTCODE and still get that type of development. The project location is, as you see here with the asterisk, just south of the Beck Interchange, or southwest, depending on how you want to view this. More specifically, you can see here, highlighted in blue, is the bounds of the annexation with the pre-existing buildings underneath that kind of transparent blue fill. The approximate size is about 14 acres. The comprehensive plan designation is commercial. The zoning, as stated, is Special District 1. Adjacent zoning has a mix between industrial within the City Post Falls and, within the county, you have some mining, some industrial, and then south of the river, you have some ag- suburban zone properties. Current land use is industrial as it's pre-existing. Water provider is City Post Falls, and the sewer provider would be the City Post Falls upon connection. So at this time, this would conclude staff's introduction of this proposal.
Okay. Thank you. We have the applicant present.
I'm going to zoom ahead. I have a map on here that the applicant would like to utilize, phasing plan.
Good evening, I'm Jack Smatana with Freeman, Smatana Consulting Engineers, representing Jaclyn Land Company tonight. Also here is Mr. Bruce Seer, who is the property manager for Jaclyn Land Company. We're excited to be here tonight. Personally, I've been looking forward to an annexation request on the seed plant for many, many years, and now the time is right with the completion of the Beck Road Interchange, and the Jaclyns have been active in the extension of Riverbend Avenue and what we're calling West Road. I think before a subdivision process, we may get more creative with that road name, but for now, we're calling it West Road. And then the Grassland Avenue, which was formerly Riverbend Avenue, has also been completed, and utility work is done. So it just lends itself now to the opportunity for development with the relocation of Simplot's seed operation. And so we bring this application forward for your consideration. I believe you have the staff report. We find that to be an excellent staff report. We would certainly like to express our appreciation to the city staff for the time and effort and the number of meetings they put in with us. We collaborated on the conditions and some of the items that Mr. Manley has already mentioned to you. They certainly should be commended for their efforts on that. And we are full support of the staff report, the findings, conclusions. You may notice, I think it's on page four, there's a number of conditions. I think it would be more efficient if we get towards the end and have some question-and-answer time, that maybe if you have some specific questions about the conditions, that might be a more efficient way to address them. But I would like to take this opportunity just to speak about several of the primary items that we believe the conditions accomplish. The first is the opportunity for the Special District zoning designation that Mr. Manley has described to you, and the appropriateness of the industrial zone per Title 18. And the second is that it allows an opportunity for an orderly phased development of the 14 acres. As you can see in the phasing plan, there are existing buildings. We've identified three potential phases, and what the conditions in the staff report feature are different thresholds that strike a balance between allowing phased development and yet not allowing the occupancy to exceed the improvement. So if you'll notice, for instance, there's a 35 percent threshold. If we reach a capacity of 35 percent in any one phase, then the improvements in the annexation fees that are associated with that phase are due, are triggered. And overall, if there's 50 percent of the entire 14 acres that is occupied, then all of the improvements then are triggered. So that's one of the special features, we believe, of the conditions that are proposed, is to allow that. I think speaking to the septic systems, this obviously was operated, the seed plant operated in the county, there's a number of health district-approved and functional subsurface septic systems in operation, and so the phasing allows for the continual use of those again with these thresholds. And in addition to that, the septic systems feature two other safeguards. One is that the Panhandle Health District has to verify initially, which they've done, and I believe you'll have that soon, and also, they have to continue to monitor the flows, the capacities, and to assure that we don't exceed their flow. And then secondly, the connection to the municipal sewer has a time certain, one year from the date of the annexation agreement. So those safeguards allow for the connection to the municipal sewer in an appropriate, balanced, orderly manner, and yet reduces the risk of any issues with the septic systems. So I just wanted to point those out without going through the conditions in any more detail. You may recall that there was an annexation request not too long ago from Jaclyn Land Company. It's the portion of land, the two acres, that's east of this request, east of Point Parkway. It was attached to approximately 20 acres of right-of-way. So this represents just a logical and orderly progression of the annexation and development. So with that, I believe that the information before you supports the applicant's request, and it supports the findings, the conclusions, the proposed conditions, and that we would ask that you afford a recommendation of approval for the annexation and the zone designation to the city council. And I'd stand for questions. If they're fairly straightforward, I'll try to answer them. If they're difficult, I'll have Bruce probably answer them.
Questions for Jack at this point? Don't?
No. No.
I guess not, Jack. Thank you. John, can we have the staff report?
So with the planning division, we did find that the property is in the Post Falls area of city of impact. It is contiguous with the city limits. It's consistent with the comprehensive plan and the policies, and that there's a detailed analysis found in the staff report. It's compatible with the adjacent uses as well. I've got three points that were mitigated concerns. Jack covered the first two, so I'm not going to go into those much, but the third one there, staff was also concerned about mitigating any potential future county pocket with future annexations. And so to go into that a little bit is when the lands to the west, if they were ever to annex, we're seeking that potentially that these would go in along with that, so we don't get a long-term county pocket, as we've seen that's occurred in the past, along the Spokane River. And those triggers and conditions were mitigated and agreed upon and found within the staff report.
John?
Yeah.
To that point, I understand the desire to want to bring the rest of it in, in one big chunk. I kind of wonder a little bit if it's appropriate to make a condition on this property that relies upon an annexation and a separate application for a different piece of property that could, in the future, be under different ownership. And I find that, I mean, that could be really, really messy. And I would just want, I mean, I understand the desire to bring it all in at once and not create a pocket, but I think that might, I mean, what's the, how do we make that not messy, or is that even really something that needs to happen?
As far as the existing language states that the land that's currently owned by Jaclyn LLP, and at such time, lands west of that road, so you're right, I mean, potentially, if they did sell that to a future owner, then per the agreement, then when the lands west, there would be approach them for annexation with the lands to the west. That's probably a condition, the lands to the west. But I don't know if legal, Will, if you have any comments regarding?
Well, I'm not aware of what the ownership of the land is between this parcel and the river. Is it under, it's under different ownership?
Currently, right now, this is all owned by the same owner, Jaclyn LLP has introduced.
My view is that if they're willing to go along with that condition to the annexation, then it's something that, it's beneficial to the city to leave in.
So do you have any other comments on that matter?
Yeah, just more on his, could you enforce that, that condition if the property was, that piece of property was sold to someone else?
We would more or less bring, I would foresee that is when the lands to the west ever annexed in, we would then bring this to light in with that public hearing for including that. It's not been uncommon in annexations in the past, not my time here, that we've conditioned annexations on lands adjoining them to come in along with them.
We would, you know, we will have an annexation agreement that sets forth these conditions, and that could be considered a consent to annex upon the condition that the other property was, had annexation requested for it. So I think that's the position we'd take down the road.
Okay, thank you.
So wouldn't that annexation agreement be tied to this property and this property only? And therefore, if someone else bought the adjoining property, wouldn't it show up on title search?
It would create a problem if the property was sold to someone else, but if Jaclyn continued to be the owner of the property and requested annexation of the land of the west, and continued to own the land essentially to the south, then we could annex it considering that they had consented to annex it in a prior annexation agreement. So it's a condition that they could defeat by selling the property, or at least create problems with us annexing it, but it's still probably worth having it in the agreement to eliminate potential problem of having that island of property not being in the city down the road.
I guess I don't really see that as a problem, because that's a future annexation, and so that's a future, if they come to annex the property of the west, and they don't annex, want to annex the property of the south, then we can always deny them by creating this little island, or this pocket.
At any rate, I think it's a beneficial condition to leave in, although it has a potential problem, but it also has potential benefits.
I see.
And also, as an additional comment, within the Parks and Rec Master Plan, there is a denoted trail system that goes along the Spokane River, and so if at such time, this ever annexed in, there would be discussions on establishing that trail system that would go along the Spokane River. It was part of that Parks Master Plan. So any other comments regarding this matter?
Andy?
So the Engineering Division commented in regards to transportation, and that there'd be no adverse impact. For the water reclamation facility, they do have capacity, and there also would be no adverse impact, but providing service would require the developer to final construction of a local lift station, and I believe that is located at about that location, is correct, Bill? So that would be where the lift station would need to be completed. For domestic water, as there is adequate supply, and it would meet the needs of the proposed project. Post Falls Police Department did comment, and they were concerned that they would have proper road infrastructure to support emergency services for the public. I had in communication with engineering, and the west Riverbend Road has been completed at full road width, and there is a hammerhead at the end, so there'd be the appropriate turning movements to get in and out. For Cutney County Fire and Rescue, they commented they had no issues. Panhandle Health District also commented had no issues, and also, there's been an email correspondence that will be introduced later. At this time, I'd stand for any further questions you have for the Post Annexation.
Questions for John.
I have a quick question. Is sewer, city sewer available there now?
Yeah, it's been, it's along Riverbend, isn't it?
Yeah, within Riverbend, once there's a lift station.
Okay, so yeah, the infrastructure's in Riverbend, and once the lift station gets completed, then they'll be able to make that connection and make it functional.
Okay, so if they build more buildings or something, they wouldn't be connected to the sewer unless the lift station was complete?
Well, there is also the trigger if there's a year.
Yeah.
I believe a year out, they'll have to complete that lift station, and/or if they exceeded a 35 percent or a threshold, or exceeded something per Panhandle Health District for flows, then they basically would have to complete that lift station prior to an occupancy.
Okay, thank you.
So John, just for clarification, this is similar to, with regards to the sewer and the septic system, to a lot of the annexations that we've done, where there's been five acres and a house on it, and the house had a septic system, and at some point, prior to us doing any subdivision or development, they have, as part of that, they hook into the city sewer. Is that similar?
Yeah, it's similar. It was, for me, I've been here almost eight years, so it's the first one I've dealt with, an annexation where you had a pre-existing building and some, you know, they're pretty large buildings, and so, and a lot of potentiality for some occupancies as well. So it was, to me, I actually enjoyed the project, you know, in that regard.
So for clarification, regardless of occupancy within a year, they'll have to, it'll have to be completed within a year, even if they don't meet the occupancy requirements? It'll have to be hooked up within a year, is that what you're saying?
That's...
The sewer lift station will have to be up and running, and they'll have to be hooked in?
Correct.
Okay.
That's condition six.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for John? All right, thank you, John.
Thank you.
Testimony. Kelly, do we have anybody signed up to speak in favor?
We do not.
Okay, but I believe we have a letter to be submitted. Okay, this letter is from the Panhandle Health District, from Jay Loveland, and says, "This email is in response to Panhandle Health District's request for comments concerning case file A-14-06, Jaclyn West Annexation, located at 4752 West Riverbend Avenue, Post Falls, Idaho. PHD does not object the annexation of this property into the city of Post Falls. All existing onsite septic systems may remain in use until time of failure or voluntary connection to municipal sewer. Once the septic system or systems fail and sewer services are within 200 feet from the property, all connections must connect to the municipal sewer collection line and the septic system abandoned. Other conditions that may require the connection to municipal sewer include discharge of industrial waste, subdivision of the property, and wastewater flows exceeding 500 gallons per day, approximately 40 full-time employee working 40 hours per week, two ERs at 250 gallons per day. If sewer services are within 200 feet of the property, all new construction must connect to the municipal sewer. At PHD's request, please notify this agency of any permits, changes, or activities that may impact the onsite sewage disposal on this property. For further comments, please contact me directly. Sincerely, Jay Loveland, Panhandle Health District." Okay, none others in favor of? Okay, how about any for neutral?
We do not.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. That will conclude the testimony. Any rebuttal? None? Okay. Questions for staff?
One question. What's the proximity of the current line in regards to the property now? Proximity? Because I'm hearing 200 feet. So is it within 200 feet already?
Sorry, can you rephrase that? I didn't catch all that.
There was a quote of 200 feet in the letter from Panhandle Health District, that they had to hook up if it's within 200 feet. So what's the proximity now of the current, where does the end of the sewer, the city sewer, end in relationship to the property?
I don't know. Bill, do you know more proficiently where that terminus is? I can pull that map up, yeah.
The connection point is to a, from which, so they have to, they would have to complete construction of a lift station, and then the connection point is out in the Point Parkway area, greater than 200 feet.
Greater than 200 feet, okay.
So, actually, there's that year condition that we also put on them, that they would need to complete this lift station for that ability to pump there as well. So, you know, the gravity sewer is a ways away, the force main and the pressurized sewer system is yet to be finalized, so there's some dry lines within there, but the whole system is not completed.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
No.
None?
Thank you.
Okay. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we'll open it up for discussion. Let's start down with Vicki.
Hi, sounds like a good plan for me.
Okay.
Everything, I mean, it seems like they covered everything in the conditions, and planning seems to be happy with what they've conditioned.
Ray?
Yeah, I think it makes sense. I mean, the comp plan, the map shows colored in commercial, but all the adjacent, or the adjacent uses there are industrial, it's an existing industrial site. I think that makes, it just makes a lot of sense. The Special District and utilizing the existing industrial zoning guidelines in, I guess it would be in Title 18, makes a lot of sense. And if the applicant's all right with conditioning other properties with this, I guess I don't really have too much of an issue with it. I think it might be a little messy down the road, but I guess that's for them to deal with. And the septic system thing, I don't think that's a big deal at all. We've annexed a lot of properties. As a matter of fact, the Cassoon Annexation, I think, has got residences with, that are on septic, because they weren't in the city, and Adams-Cassoon Annexation. So all of those are, you know, when they, when sewer gets there, they hook in, and it's very similar. So I don't see this as anything different, other than the fact that it's just big existing buildings.
Okay. Ryan?
No, I totally, totally agree with what Ray said. My concern, obviously, after seeing the letter, was, you know, staff obviously feel comfortable, I feel comfortable with condition five and six regarding septic. Other than that, I think it's a good fit. I'm comfortable.
Okay. Nancy?
No, I don't, I'm, I'm good with it, and I think I have all my questions answered.
Okay, thank you. Brad?
I support, supportive.
Okay. Mark?
I'm abstaining.
Okay. Well, I think it's a great fit. I got to compliment the staff and the engineering firm on working together on the conditions, because there's quite a number of them, but I think all of the questions and concerns that I had are addressed in the conditions and the finding. in the, the conditions and the findings of facts, so I certainly support it. So with that, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll go ahead and move to approve the Annexation A-14-06, Jaclyn West Annexation Request, with the designation of SMARTCODE, Special District, SD1, with conditions 1 through 12 in place, and ask that it be moved forward to City Council for final review.
Okay, got a second?
I second.
Okay, and we have a second. We have a roll call, Kelly.
Kimball?
Yes.
Carey?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Hampi?
Yes.
Ostemeyer?
Yes.
Borders?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. That concludes that line of business. Any new business this evening? John, can bring forward. Staff comments? None? Okay, Commission comments? Anybody?
Nope.
All right, just reminder that next month will be election of your chairman and vice chairman for the Commission. So with that, I need a motion.
Motion adjourned.
It'll be adjourned, thank you.